I'm going down for the evening on the night. Not a ticket. Yeah. It's veterans day, you know.
Ah, I passed him on my way back this way.
Is he done?
He resigned today.
So that's great, right? And a camel.
It's, it's.
I get to work with him. With a haircut? It always looks good though. Oh. It just flips like a perfect way. I always admire it every time I sit here.
Good evening, this is the October 26th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. First up, we have appeal number 2017-46. And they've asked for an adjournment. Can I hear a motion?
Chairman, I respectfully move appeal 2017-046 be adjourned to December 14th, 2017.
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I will vote aye. Next one is appeal number 2017-50, EP Equity Holdings IV. You have anything else to say, Mr. Cuddy, before we pass judgment? You're all set?
No, nothing else. I understand them to come back for return match.
Okay, very good. Let's have a read. Anyone else to be heard on that matter? Okay, let's see the reading.
Move that determination of EP Equity Holdings IV LLC, 582 Edwards Avenue, Callerton, forbearances to and or relief from provisions of Chapter 301, Section 114, proposing an office use on a parcel where such use is not specifically permitted, principal use be not granted in accordance with the application sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector. A written determination will be available for the town clerk within two weeks.
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, Mr. Cuddy will see down the road.
I can come back from the use variance application.
Absolutely.
Okay, very good.
Good night, Mr. Cuddy. Okay, appeal number 2017-52, Thomas McCarthy. All right, Mr. McCarthy, you've been sworn in. You have any other paperwork for us? You've already been sworn in.
Yeah.
Okay. You only have to be sworn in once.
Thank you. I've been sworn out a lot.
We all have our moments. Do you have any other paperwork for us or anything else to say?
Unless there's anything else that's requested of me.
No, we have everything we needed from you. I know we updated the plan, reposted, republished. We did everything to show the 11 feet instead of 12 feet.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. McCarthy. Anyone else to be heard on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I know that we received some correspondence regarding the case. And we did ask to have the joining owner or the owner that was objecting to appear before we vote on it. Did the owner come? Was the owner here? So they sent no representative? Then I would move that we read the appeal and move on.
Sounds good to me. Who's got it?
I do.
Read on.
So I move that the determination McCarthy management of 1377 Poleski Street, Riverhead forbearances were relieved from provisions of Chapter 301, Section 123, having a proposed front yard of 11 feet, where the minimum required is 30 feet, and a proposed side yard setback of five feet, where the minimum is 30. And Chapter 301, 236A2, having a proposed buffer from a residential use of five feet, where the minimum is 10 feet. Be approved in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments, if any, as filed by the building inspector, with the building inspector, excuse me. Written determination will be available within the town clerk's office in two weeks.
Second.
All right, Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So best of luck with your project.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too.
Have a good night.
Okay.
Next up, we have appeal number 2017-58 for Riverhead Commons, 780 Old Country Road, Riverhead, forbearances to and/or relief from the provisions of Chapter 301, Section 236A1, where the proposed buffer between non-residential development and Suffolk County parkland is 10 feet, where the minimum required is 25 feet.
If you want to drop your paperwork up to us first, then we'll get you up on the.
The pictures, do you have the mailings?
Yeah.
Just the receipts and the affidavit.
That's what you have to do.
Oh, I get to do it, you're right. Just those, you know, like, yep. The other ones. Yeah.
Okay, up to the microphone. You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth to help you out.
I do.
Your name and your address, sir.
Isaac Israel, 107 Promenade Drive, Aquabog. Good evening.
State your case.
Okay. Good evening. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Riverhead Commons LLC, for requesting relief from the provisions of Chapter 301, Section 236A1, where the proposed buffer between the non-residential development and Suffolk County parkland is 10 feet, where the minimum required is 25 feet on a property located at 780 Old Country Road. We were previously granted this relief on two other applications. And we've been working on this project. We purchased the property in 2009, before Suffolk County actually had purchased the adjacent land for drinking water protection. And we've had, we originally submitted our site plan in 2011. We're on revision 43. I think we're very, very close with the planning board at this point, in all seriousness. The property borders the Suffolk County land on two sides, to the north and on the east side. The south side is the road, and then the west side is the car dealership. At the request of the planning board and the Suffolk County DPW, we had designed our site plans to have our curb cuts line up with the two curb cuts across the street that service, like where Firestone is. And as far as in that buffer zone that we're requesting 10 feet instead of the 25, within the 25 feet, there's not going to be any buildings. It's only for the landscaping and parking way, parking lot and driveway aisle. And just to try to line up the curb cuts, again, that was our hardship in not being able to keep the 25-foot buffer. I don't think there'll be any impact on the adjacent properties because we're adjacent to the county land to the north and the east, where there won't be any development, and the existing auto dealer to the west. The, I guess we've switched our site plan from retail to medical. And the reason we would like to, you know, have the parking in the buffer areas so that's close to the building, as most medical tenants require.
Okay. All right. Anyone out in the audience have anything to say about this project? No one? Any of the board members have any questions?
Yes, sir.
I mean, we've already been over this before.
Couple times.
I have no problem with it. All right, who's got the reading?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the determination of Riverhead Commons, 780 Old Country Road, Riverhead, forbearances to and or relief from the provisions of Chapter 301, Section 236A1, where the proposed buffer between non-residential development and Suffolk County parklands is 10 feet, where the minimum required is 25 feet. Be granted in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector. A written determination will be available to the town clerk within two weeks.
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I vote aye. See, appeal has been granted.
Thank you.
You know the procedure. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Take care.
Next, we have appeal number 2017-59 for Kevin C. Ray of 97 Little Bay Road, Waiting River, forbearances to and/or relief from the provisions of Chapter 301, Section 34, proposing to construct an addition with a rear yard setback of 42 feet, where the minimum required is 50 feet.
Your mailings and your, yep, just hand them on up there.
The only thing I haven't got, you know, the photograph is supposed to take of everything. I don't have any on my phone.
It's okay, it's not referred by code. If anyone in the audience wants to say that you didn't post, then we'll use that as your.
All right, Mr. Ready to step up to the microphone? If you raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth to help you out.
I do.
Kindly state your name and your address.
Kevin Ray, 97 Little Bay Road, Waiting River.
Okay, Mr. Ray, you have the floor.
Sure. We would like to get a relief from the provision for Chapter 30, 304, Section 34, proposing to construct in addition to our home in the rear with a setback of 42, where the minimum is supposed to be 50 feet. I have a, I don't know if you received it, but my neighbor, who would be probably most impacted by this, he lives actually behind me and owns a property on the side.
Gave you the up.
Okay.
We definitely saw it.
They say they're happy to let me do it.
Yep. It was a nice look.
So what's within this addition, if I might ask? I'm sorry? What is going to be inside this addition? What is it?
Oh, it's just like a one-room sunroom type thing, a four-season sunroom. It's inside the confines of the currently existing patio deck that we're going to take off. And the hot tub we're going to eliminate as well.
Thank you.
All right, any of the board members have anything else?
No, sir.
Nobody? Anyone out in the audience? You're looking pretty good there, Mr. Ray.
I move that the determination of Kevin Ray at 97 Little Bay Road, Waiting River, forbearances to and relief from the provisions of Chapter 301, Section 34, proposing to construct in addition with the year, the rear yard setback of 42 feet, where the minimum required is 50 feet. Be granted in accordance with the application and sketches with the amendments thereto, if any, filed with the building inspector. A written determination will be available to the town clerk within two weeks.
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
And Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So your appeal has been granted and.
Thank you very much.
Best of luck.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next, we have appeal number 2017-61 for Mary Ann Gil Martin, 631 Conic Bay Boulevard, Aquabog, forbearances to and/or relief from the provisions of Chapter 301, Section 222E, proposing to reconstruct the dwelling, which will expand the gross floor area within the required side and rear yards, representing an increase in the degree of nonconformity of a pre-existing, nonconforming, single-family dwelling, where such expansion is not permitted.
I have my affidavit posting and then the certified mailings. I also, I have 1117s. Could I give out packets?
Yeah, we'll take them. So we'll take one?
Give them one.
Take one, stand there and give one to the lawn.
First, probably.
And then each of the board members.
Oh.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson.
If you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth to help you out.
Thank you.
You state your name and your address.
John Stowzie, 7005 Sandview Avenue, South.
And you are?
I'm the architect.
You have the floor.
Thank you. I'm here representing Mary Ann Gil Martin. I've given out an 1117 packet. We're looking to renovate and expand Mary Ann's house on the existing foundations using the existing footprint. There's an existing nonconforming side yard setback of 18.3 feet, when the requirement is 25 feet. I produced a diagram on page one, which shows the existing foundation and showing how we're using substantially all the foundation. The light blue areas are where we're squaring off the house, where it currently has these funny notches. And other than that, we're working substantially off the existing foundations. And I'm seeking variance relief for the existing nonconforming side yard. On pages two, three, and four show the primary views of the house once we renovate and expand the second floor. So essentially going from a one and a half story house to a two-story house.
Well, it's a great spot. Looks good.
Do they have any plans for that garage there? That's right on the line.
At this point, we don't have plans for that garage.
Okay. Reside it at least?
I would like to refurbish it.
Yeah.
Refurbish it in things interesting.
It's all going forward with the new house. Okay.
And that would be part of this, if the board.
That's a beautiful lot.
Nice set of plans, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, very impressive. Thank you.
All right. Do we have anybody in the audience? Anything to say about this? No? Nobody?
Get on. Just shot.
Okay.
Wherever holds your peace.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that the determination of Mary Ann Gil Martin, 631 Conic Bay Boulevard, Aquabog, forbearances to and or relief from the provisions of Chapter 301, Section 222E, proposing to reconstruct the dwelling, which will expand the gross floor area within the required side, side and rear yards, representing an increase in the degree of nonconformity of a pre-existing, nonconforming, single-family dwelling, where such expansion is not permitted. Be granted in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector. A written determination will be available with the town clerk within two weeks.
Second.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mrs. Worthington.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mr. Seabrook.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, you understand, two weeks from now, paperwork should all be done and we continue on from there.
John, you have an office in Southfold?
I have a house in Southfold.
Oh, so you just lived there, but your business is in Hoboken?
Business is in Hoboken, yes.
Okay.
You used to go to the clam burrow house back in the day?
My father, I think, paid the mortgage on that place. He ate so many clams at that place.
That was a great place to be. Drop the clams on the floor. About every half hour, a guy in a corner come along with the broom, sweep them up.
All right.
Great joint back in the day.
That was it.
Have a good day.
Next, we have appeal number 2017-62, Megan Schofield of 125 Hallick Street, Riverhead, forbearances to and/or relief from the provisions of Chapter 301, Section 9A2, proposing to construct a fence six feet in height along a street line where the maximum height is four feet.
Does hand the mailings up there, young lady? Does hand the mailings up?
Some of the time and date stamps got cut off on the landscape photos, but I can like screenshot my. I have no worries.
All right, we're about in the thousand here tonight. Oh, almost a thousand. We've had a couple of bells. Let's see how we deal with you. Just kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth to help you out.
I do.
Kindly state your name and your address. Just pull up the microphone there a little bit for you. There you go.
Hi, my name is Megan Schofield. I live at 125 Hallick Street in Riverhead, New York. I would like to put up a six-foot fence along, I live out of corner lot, between Heights Place and Hallick Street. And I'd like to put up a six-foot fence surrounding my backyard. We have a puppy, so.
How big is that puppy? Going to scale a four-foot fence?
He may. You don't know.
Okay.
Megan, on your survey.
Yes.
This fence only, it doesn't go all the way up. It goes like almost to the back third of the house.
Yes, yeah, so it's going to be in line with our neighbors across the street. They have a fence that protrudes out. It's four foot and they have basically shrubs that go up, but we're going to go in line with them.
And then you're going back and it goes all the way to the garage, right?
Yes.
And then is there a fence along that westerly side also?
Yes, our neighbors have a fence in between.
So you don't have to put up the fence?
On that portion, yes. In between us and the neighbors, they already have a fence.
How long, how tall is their fence?
Probably three or four feet.
Probably four, okay.
Yeah.
Why do you feel you need a six-foot fence?
Yes, I'll be doing it for privacy mostly. I mean, we live in a corner lot. There's a bus stop right across the street. We have a lot of parents, a lot of people going to that area.
And they're staring at your laundry hanging or something?
A lot of people, actually, some of them talk across our back, our lawn, to our neighbors. So they'll talk from the sidewalk all the way over there, too.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Sounds critical.
Yeah.
Are you going to screen the fence at all? I mean, six feet, kind of.
Well, the top portion of it.
Going to be a vinyl fence?
It's going to be a vinyl fence. So in reality, it's about five feet high. And then it's got, it's got a design at the top foot. So technically, people could still see in if they wanted to. And we're going to have gates and stuff like that.
So it's like a white vinyl?
Yeah, yeah. I have a picture on my phone if you guys want to see it. We put it up on part of the area because there were bushes there previously, giant trees, and we removed them because they were completely surrounding the house. And we put up a piece just to block off more privacy in that portion.
Mr. Chairman just mentioned screening. Would you consider the easterly side of that fence that faces inside, putting any kind of shrubs along there to kind of break up that long runaway?
On which side?
The easterly side.
On the street side, he's asking.
But the shrubs would be inside the property.
The shrubs would be inside. Well, we had.
No, the outside.
The outside of the fence, you're talking about.
We wouldn't have anything to kind of keep in our dog. That's ultimately why we wanted to. Right now, we have a pole.
No, we understand that, but.
He's asking if you would put shrubs, if you would consider putting shrubs on the street side.
Oh, we plan on planting small shrubbery on the exterior. But there's still going to be about a, I believe, about a four, four feet or five feet space gap of lawn between the sidewalk and where we're putting the fence. So it's not going all the way up to the sidewalk. There's still going to be about a four or five window.
You said four feet setback. Off the sidewalk, it looks like.
Yes, yes.
So it's, it's just going along that?
Yeah.
I mean, you are softening up already the visual by having chosen a fence that has the top foot portion where it's see-through, like, it's like that lattice look, right?
Yeah, exactly. That's what exactly what it is. And also, two other houses that are on corner lots that intersect between Accrily and Hallick Place actually also have fences that protrude out that are six feet high.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not uncommon in the neighborhood.
You know, it's a six-foot fence, what she's saying, but, but it's, you know, five feet of it, you can't see through.
Do you guys want, I have a picture on my phone. I can show you guys if you'd like.
I think you should, yeah. Because I think it softens up your fence a lot.
That's it.
Yeah, that's what Vern's right next to.
It's on the left side of that property, four foot off the line.
Yeah, let me see.
That's the portion we have up currently. Just for private, for privacy purposes.
Yeah. It's got like a lattice look on top. Yeah.
This looks nice. Look, ready? This is what it looks like with the lattice on top.
Yeah.
What kind of dog are you out?
He's a, he's a mix. So he's 10 months old. He's Alaskan Malamute Chow and Schnauzer.
So he's a big dog.
He, right now, he's medium-sized dog, yes.
Well, Schnauzers are small, aren't they?
No, you can have miniatures there and giant.
Yeah, really?
Yeah, his mother is a full Schnauzer. And the mother was actually in the shelter. And he was born in the shelter.
Really?
Yeah, mother's really tall.
Oh, wow.
It's got the lattice on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see it. Everybody all right with it?
Yes.
Okay. I don't see any objections. With the lattice, but please, with the lattice.
Of course, yeah. Yeah, we're going to keep it very uniform.
You want to add anything?
Yeah.
Anyone else to be heard on this matter? It's all family.
He's our neighbor. He wanted to come.
Okay, neighbor, get up here.
I'm across the street neighbor. Name's Ross Manorrell. And.
Just go to the microphone. I have to sway you, and just raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth to help you out.
I do.
And if you kindly state your name and your address.
My name is Ross Manorrell. I live at 138 Hallick Street, across the street.
And you have no objection to this?
Not at all.
Thank you. That's all you have to say.
Okay.
Nice of you to come.
I practiced that all.
I bet you did. All right.
It's good to have good neighbors.
My neighborhood is very good. Everyone's very nice.
That's good to hear.
It's good to be a good neighbor.
Yes.
Okay, who has the reading?
How long we're working on it?
Oh, a couple whereasses and what it ises. What?
Thirsty?
Yes, I am. Very thirsty.
I think, I just maybe just discuss that, but it's, I think that's kind of what you were kind of getting at. And no pride in honor.
Open work.
Or open work.
All right, so we're going to ask you to throw a little shrubbery along that, too. Nothing too crazy.
We can do that.
Okay.
Okay, I move that the determination of Megan Schofield at 125 Hallick Street, Riverhead, for variances to and relief from provisions of Chapter 301, Section 9A2, proposing to construct a fence six feet in height along a street line where the maximum height is four feet, with the condition that upon the fence being installed, having lattice or open work along the top one foot, and screened on the exterior with approximately three-foot-high shrubberies at three-foot intervals. Be granted in accordance with the application and sketches with the amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector. A written determination will be available at the town clerk within two weeks.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Do you want to second that there, Mr. Whitmire?
Yes, second.
Thank you. Mr. Barnes.